Meeting in order. I, John Henning, President of the Board of Trustees of McHenry County Conservation District, has determined that it is not practical or prudent to hold a public meeting for the Board of Trustees on May 25th, 2021, in person due to the current pandemic. Members of the public have been requested to attend through video conferencing. That being said, I'd ask everyone to rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Making a roll call.
Trustee Brand?
Yep.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Present.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Down?
Here.
Trustee Honey?
Present. All here in the common floor. Thank you. We can skip three, two then. Brings us to 4.0. Um, I'd like to read that. Uh... Chris, are you... Oh, you've got glasses in your eyes.
I've got glasses. You're all seven of us.
You're home.
No excuse for now. Okay. Conservation ethic, to foster conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. The conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. The conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal three, to manage its areas in such a manner that archaeology, archaeological and historical resources are integrated with natural resources for optimal preservation, education and recreational benefits.
Thank you. And stewardship pledge, Linda would...
Sure.
Thank you.
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns and a strong economy and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover and recreate. We will empower you to conserve our water, wildlife and way of life here in McHenry County by actively seeking your input and support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
You have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Linda, Pat, you can had your hand up for a second. A motion made seconded. A roll call.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes. Agenda's been adopted unanimously. Special recognition presentation. Do we have anything I'm not aware of here?
Is that this evening? And our guest, but Kelly's been in.
Pardon me, Kelly?
Kelly will, under kind of what they'll recognize, I'm a trustee.
Okay. Kelly's on board. Let's go.
Want me to start now?
That would be good. Thank you.
Okay. So, hold on just a minute.
Okay. That's much better. Um, so, thank you. I apologize for not being there today. I really, I completely, I'm so used to being online that I totally forgot that I had to drive there and go today. So, I apologize for that. I can't believe I did that. So, um, I, that won't happen again. I apologize. But I am here. So, um, I just wanted to give you a couple, before I introduce Ronaldo again, wanted to give you a couple updates of what's going on at the county board. We are having a meeting on Thursday at Committee of the Hall. We're having a special meeting and we will be talking about redistricting. And we will be doing, it's being divided up into nine districts with two, um, two county board members per district. So, we'll be discussing that and voting that on Thursday. And then we would have a couple meetings planned, Committee of the Hall meetings planned, where we will be talking about strategic plan. And those are in the next few weeks too. So, we will be nailing down our strategic plan after that. And there's nothing really else on the board right now. But I do want to introduce again Ronaldo Gayton Ray. And he is, I know he's excited to be here again. And I don't know if Ray, if you wanted to say anything more than you did last Thursday?
Uh, no, I don't really have anything else to add. Just like you said, I'm excited to be here and looking forward to getting started.
A welcome, a welcome. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Trustees report. Anybody got anybody in there?
You know what? I was just gonna say, if I, if you don't mind, um, I did tell something really quick. Um, everyone tomorrow will come in and we'll talk about what we've done in the past month or whatever. And I just, I did want to point out, Chicago Wilderness has developed a webinar series on racial equity and so forth. There have been two programs. The first one was on the history of conservation. And I just wanted to do a shout out. Tom Simpson, our research ecologist, was the person who led that one. And I will tell you, it was fabulous. I think it lasted about two hours. There is a recording if you're interested. Jackie Barrow also participated as one of the voices. And the presentation explored the different perspectives on the history of conservation by looking at the lives and voices of those who shaped our relationship to the natural world. So, that was our presidents, historians, poets and so on. But it included both the iconic voices and the marginalized. And these perspectives were woven together to provide a story of America's ever-changing relationship with our environment. I've heard Tom speak multiple times, Wild Things, and he runs a technology program. He has a very interesting, thoughtful and philosophical approach to conservation in general and restoration. And so, he really made for a very interesting and engaging presentation. So, if you ever get a chance, you can break it up in a couple of hours.
I was on that first one.
Yeah. So, it was, like I said, it's through the Chicago Wilderness website. It's under Get Involved. It's pretty well to get there. Get Involved and it's under there. And you can go right to it. That was it.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I do have one thing I want to thank. Kelly, you mentioned that you joined the Food Co-op and I've been meeting too. So, now I'm member 950. So, thanks for reminding me. And then there was a trustee from the village of Wonder Lake. He's a good friend, neighbor. He was walking by. And he had stopped and said he wants to do something about protecting the woodlands of that West Bay subdivision in Wonder Lake. And it's, I bet on those woods. It's a nice woods. But I explained the situation and mentioned that perhaps a partnership. So, I said, why don't you go talk to Lisa and maybe we can work out a partnership? So, just be aware of that. It's maybe a 20 or 30 acre woodland, nice oaks. I don't know if it's hard stork oaks, but I just want you all to be aware of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? I want to move on to the president's report. All I have is after the cowl this last weekend, I did talk to Pat Lawler. Reached out to her about the paddle Kish and asked her what it is they really wanted at this point in time. And she basically said, well, what they really would like is just access to the Ritz Road that we have a place there that hunters park in the fall. And they would like to be able to park there and launch from that spot. That's what their immediate...
But that risk doesn't go all the way to the creek. The river...
No, but we have a, we actually...
Oh, they get on a parcel and go.
Yeah. We have a parcel that goes on there. And she says, and when we get down there, there's a spot for like six cars to park there. And they were, would like to be able to use that. So, I did talk to Elizabeth today about that. And so, she's, she's been doing some follow-up on it. But anyway, I had a good discussion with Pat. And, you know, they, they really want to work with us and, of course. And so, anyway, that's kind of setting that up. And we're just looking for consensus tonight as to, it's not on the agenda for a vote, just some discussion as to how we would direct staff and legal if we're all interested in doing anything or...
Thanks for doing that, John. Good. Thank you.
Yeah. I also reached after the meeting to Pat, sent her an email thanking her for presenting and being here with us. And she's out of town. But I wanted time to be able to follow up with Andrew Ping, who is our general counsel, and then have a conversation with John. So, Andrew and I did speak this morning. And I thought it would be great for him to be able to address some of the legal liability issues and as ways to which that we could draft that. And so, Andrew, do you want to maybe highlight, since you have the background of this group, it's not formally a group, but how they could proceed in something of this nature?
No, you're muted.
Andrew, are you there?
Yeah. Sorry, I was muted. I didn't realize I was muted. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. So, Elizabeth and I spoke earlier today at some length. She'd also sent me materials through the group's request as well as your discussion from last week to give me some background. Based on our discussions, the way I look at it is we've got sort of two components of this. We've got their, the first request from the group to access portion of the river to do some cleanup work, to make it pass, use kayaks and things like that. And then the second component of that request is potentially creating some form of public access to allow members of the public, including this group, access through conservation district property to the river itself. So, just sort of addressing this generally, obviously, anytime you let third parties on your property, there is a risk associated with that if someone were to get hurt or injured. Obviously, in this case, the tools required to clear brush, fallen trees, dead trees, limbs, et cetera, carries with it inherent risk. We're talking about chainsaws, regular saws, all sorts of stuff. And then you, you know, that's compounded with not just dry land, but you're gonna need to be out in the water, you know, either wading in or in boats or some sort of vessel that will allow you access to these. So, there is some increased risk. With that said, you know, this isn't unlike many other activities that take place on district property all the time where you have some, some third party coming onto your property to do something. And you manage that through appropriate contracts that would include indemnification, insurance requirements, assumption of risk, hold harmless. I mean, it could be a variety of things in that document. So, certainly, if this is something the district and the public is interested in, we can facilitate it. There are a few challenges associated with it. As Elizabeth was alluding to, this group of individuals, they're not, they're not formed as any part of a nonprofit corporation or any sort of company. So, what that means is it's difficult for them to obtain insurance. They can't get, you know, a commercial general liability policy that you might see a contractor get that would apply to all of them. They would, you know, they, they're all here. So, it would be possible for them to all obtain their own individual CGLs, but that's probably very unlikely. It's probably cost prohibitive. So, the insurance is a challenge. That being said, this type of activity, where it's low... You know, what you're really concerned about and why you have insurance and indemnification is, it's for the risk of injury to third persons or property of third parties or even the district's property. But this is not an area of district property that's open to the public. So, the chance that this group, while they're out there performing the work, is gonna accidentally hurt somebody other than themselves is very small, if that, you know, if it exists at all. And likewise, in talking with Elizabeth, it doesn't sound like this area of district property has anything really out there that could be damaged. I mean, they're out there cutting trees, but that, there's no buildings out there. There's nothing, you know, they can't accidentally back up a piece of equipment and damage, you know, something other than just what's out there. So, I, risks are relatively low there. They're not non-existent. But I think really, what you're most likely worried about is that group is going to hurt themselves or someone else in the group with some piece of equipment. And again, that can be damaged through proper agreement. So, certainly, this is something if the board is interested that we could work with staff and legal. We could put together the necessary paperwork. Again, whether what we're asking of this group is something they're willing to undertake, that's a separate question. You know, certainly, we would want to make sure there's indemnification. We would want to make sure there's hold harmless. There is assumption of risk. We would want them all, because they're individuals, we would want them all to be signatories to this agreement so that they're all responsible for their actions and the actions of the group. We would also, I think in talking with Elizabeth, we would want to create very clear set of guidelines in terms of what work is going to be performed, where it's gonna be performed and how it's going to be performed to make sure that nobody's doing anything that, that increases risk. For example, we don't want them damaging banks of the river. We don't want them cutting big limbs and tree, letting them float down the river where they might cause damage to either other district property or other third parties downstream of the district. So, again, these are all things that we can manage through appropriate agreements, but there, there is some work to be done. And, you know, and whether at the end of the day, the group decides that they want to undertake all the things that we would ask of them is, you know, that's a, that's a question we don't have an answer to.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Anybody have a follow-up? Do you want staff to follow up or you just want, or you're looking for a direction from... Go ahead, Bill.
I guess, yeah, I have a, I have a question. And Andrew can comment it also. I mean, we work with volunteers, I believe, in controlled burns and in other activities. And I don't know the full range of those activities, but they probably involve hand tools and things that, you know, someone could fall and potentially hurt themselves. So, if we did this, if the staff, if the board thinks it's worthwhile, is there a model that we already employ utilizing volunteers under supervision by the staff that gets us around some of these legal entanglements? In other words, well, they would have to show some type of proficiency to use the equipment that they thought was necessary. And if we thought that someone was not properly vetted, we would ask them and tell them that they weren't able to do whatever they were planning to do. And we would have some type of oversight so that whatever trimming and obstruction, removal of obstruction, you know, was just sort of held to a minimum and done in a safe way. So, that's one thought or question, the volunteer model supervised by our staff.
And Bill, that definitely was a, that's a secondary option that should the district choose to do. What's available? We do have volunteers, but it comes to capacity and then the responsibility of training and oversight. So, it does shift. There's a higher level, I think, that we manage our volunteers when they're out there than they are covered under Poderma. And they would meet our training and protocols and things like that. I do know site stewards and Ed from Natural Resources, probably most familiar with the work that you have our site stewards and volunteers doing. Do you want to speak to the specifics of that current program?
Sure. We do have volunteers who use equipment, including chainsaws. That's, there's an extensive training that goes on for those volunteers and they have to be recertified periodically. If they're on prescribed burns, they need to be doing those burns with district employees. The volunteer model will work for just about anything. The problem is capacity. This is not, this type of work and what the group wants to do is not a volunteer stewardship day at a site that's a couple hours long. I'm very familiar with that part of the Kish Milwaukee. It's, it's got some major problems with log jams and things that have fallen in it. You're not talk, uh, we're not talking about a couple of days worth of work. We're talking about extended work with staff needing to be there to do it, to supervise along with them. And it needs to be done on a yearly basis because of the nature of that river and what's around it. So, if it's taken on as a volunteer activity, it's gonna be very labor intensive for the district. I just think that needs to be understood upfront. The other thing is, we do not allow clearing of brush with power equipment in water. We don't even have a training for it. And we don't have staff that could train it. So, that kind of training would have to be contracted from the outside. So, those are just some things to consider.
Chris, you were gonna say something, you know?
Well, I was just trying to get up to speed on what type of work they were gonna be doing, but now I realize.
And that's my biggest concern is capacity. We talked, again, about the snowmobilers grant that on the surface is nothing, but there it takes time to have a staff there while they're working. I, I, I can't. I just can't ask. The cup's already full. So...
So, that being said, would you be interested in what Andrew was laying out before that? That they could continue that work, but through...
Limited attendance by our staff?
Yes.
And access on Ritz Road, going through that parcel to get, I don't know if I have a problem with that. We have the proper legal coverage.
Right.
That's two parts. So, the license for them to conduct their necessary clearing, that's one part. Then access for public access is a secondary layer of other things that we would need to work towards because there are areas we would need to take into consideration.
But is it their state law that allows recreational stuff to happen without the liability being in place on our... Is there a state law?
Andrew, do you want to discuss the, there's the recreational access? And then if we are inviting as a public entity, public to property to enter, can you speak to that?
It was Gabe that said last time that when you're on the water, you're okay. You put them in the creek, correct, and so on our land?
I, I, most of that, yes, there are. When you're inviting members of the public onto you to conservation district property, participate in recreational activities, there are a host of immunities available through the Tort Immunity Act that would protect the district based on a variety of factors that happens out there. There are protections, certainly. In terms of the access, you would not be allowed to just create private access for this group only. If you're gonna open it up for access, generally speaking, you're gonna have to keep it open, you know, to the general public. And again, allowing them to do that, there's gonna be costs involved. Somebody's got to improve it. Somebody's got to provide the access. Somebody's got to maintain it. Not entirely what is or isn't contemplated in terms of what this launch might look like. But there's certainly the likelihood that there'd be, need to be some ADA durations in terms of accessible launch area if you are gonna be building something new, depending on what goes in there. And then obviously, so there's gonna be some upfront capital expenditures to make the site accessible. And then obviously, moving forward, there's gonna be maintenance involved. And the group was able to secure some grant dollars to allow them to do this clearing. I don't know how well financed they are beyond that. So, even for something as simple as the yearly maintenance of clearing the river, you know, that's, that's a cost that the district would probably have to be prepared to assume or at least the risk. Same with the ongoing maintenance related to a future public access point. I just don't know how well capitalized this group is. And so, again, if you go down that route, you have to explore what kind of assets they have and what commitments they can make. And otherwise, that's another thing that the district would have to take responsibility for.
Just a second. Lynn has a question.
So, to your point, Andrew, if we open this up for access for them to come and work on the site, then that particular access point has to be available to anybody?
No, no. Sort of, just to clarify, you could, you could allow them access through a license agreement to perform the clearing work. But if you're going to then go to kind of stage two, which is going to create a public launch or an area where people from the public can access through your property and the river with canoe, that, that access would have to be open to the general public.
I guess I was under the impression, I only wanted to do sides cleared 20 feet out of the middle with that access. Most people don't want to paddle that long. So, when they put it in, they only want to go maybe an hour. So, basically, they just want to have some place for the people just to get off. So, I mean, it's not like they wanted to access that to clear it. That's what I was under the impression, but...
We have several other accesses to that part of the river and stuff, don't we?
No, nothing there. Only a Boone County line.
Okay. So, this was used for hunting, right? And that's what they use it now for.
Right. The line in there for the hunters to go into.
Well, I, to me, it seems, you know, like you have to walk before you run. And I'll use the analogy of dipping your toe in the water. I mean, to me, this seems consistent with what the conservation district can provide to the citizens of the community. And we already do this on the Nipper sink. It's not absolutely, I don't understand why the Nipper sink is so different from the Kish Milwaukee other than, you know, perhaps it's deeper and a little wider and maybe there's less annual maintenance. I don't know. But it seems, my, my thought is that you have an interested group of citizens, no different from snowmobilers, horseback riders, cross-country skiers, people who use the trails. And, and, you know, it happens to be in a part of the county that perhaps isn't as well-served in recreational activities. So, I, I mean, I would certainly support having the staff find the time to meet with these people. Don't let these people tell you what to do, but find out how capable they seem to be and, you know, see if we can develop a plan. Maybe it would be a half a mile of, of the creek. Doesn't have to be five miles. And then, you know, give us a cost estimate of time and so forth and so forth. And we can, we can vote it up or down. But I would, I would give them both a hearing and an opportunity to, to work with us.
Well, Bill, I gotta say, there's one correction. There is nothing like this ever has or now happening on the Nipper. No group has ever asked for this kind of thing. It's always within the purview of the conservation district on the Nipper sink.
But we have paddlers on the Nipper sink.
Correct.
Right.
On our property.
On our property. And we have launches and I don't, and pull-out spots. So, and we must be involved in some type of maintenance in relation to that, you know? Now, I don't know, and then I'm, you know, you probably have a to-do list that's 10 feet high and not enough workers to, to complete the to-do list or enough hours in the day. But to me, this is consistent with our mission and, and, you know, we can be worked, we can work towards some type of accommodation.
Well...
I'm waiting for Bill to finish.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. When he was done, that's all.
I'm done.
I am trying to understand all of this. I feel like there's a couple of different components to this. And that, first and foremost, I would be concerned about liability and that, and then... Will it, will it cost our employees time? Will it cost money? Will it cost, how much will it cost us to do this on an ask? I mean, it doesn't, there have to be some sort of plan? I feel like there's gotta be some sort of plan, not just, hey, I want to do this, let me do it. I, I'm just a little confused on how this is going about.
Yeah. Bill and you are on the same spot. Yeah. Good point.
So, I think part of it too is, I think ultimately, something on the Kish would be wonderful. I mean, in building off of what we've done on the Nipper sink, and at some point, as...
Exactly.
At some point, when, yeah, when the county develops even further, there's gonna be a lot of pressure on that. And it would be great for access on the west side of the county. Part of, and, and a couple of things, it does get down to capacity and it does get down to strategic plan. At this point, and not that it can't be, but it will cost something else. If we, if we take this on, we're talking about taking something else up. Because every time a group comes in and asks for the staff's time to review, and I think staff has already put in a significant amount of time of looking into this. I think what they came up with today was, what, how can we do it? Where, because I had asked about the volunteer model as well. the volunteer model as well. And how can we do this with the least, cover our liability, make a signature of, it doesn't take up a lot of staff time, but allows the group to come in and do what they wanted to do. And that was what they were talking about with this whole harmless agreement and allowing them to come through. I think there's still complications with that, especially if they're not allowed to take the logs down the river. Where are they putting them? If there's a lot of in and out of movement of logs, which they're really, right now, haven't been doing, does that create some additional problems on the landscape? So it, it gets down to like capacity and we had something that we've been considering. Not that we shouldn't, but it would be good to hear from staff if they're going to do something like this. What are we picking up?
Lynn, I talked to Elizabeth today and I said, that too, I said, the trouble of these things, these type of items that come up is we say, okay, they're good and we know that something's going to fall off at the other end of the log, but we don't know what it is. You know, we don't know what Elizabeth or staff are going to say. And maybe, you know, if we had to choose between two, two items, then it'd be an up or down vote on one or the other. But we don't, we don't know that. It's up to them to manage around it. My point is though, this group is out there doing this work now. They're already out there. And I don't think they're going to stop trying to work through this if we say no. So I think it's, we need to continue to have discussion with them and figure out what part they can play working with us and vice versa. And maybe it'll be minimal, maybe it'll be more, maybe it'll be very small this year and be something we build on. I think it would only be small this year. One to June here and their season probably ends in August, so we're down to a few months now. But I, I think if staff could have just a little bit more minimal talk and work through the legal part and at least get some ground rules put together along the way. I know we've had some discussion in the past and I think what they're doing has evolved from what they had planned. And I think probably our thought process has changed a little. I think if we just keep working along and not expect that everything's going to be just great from the beginning, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, that's three of you asking for a plan, time, effort, money. I'll, I'll get off the know and say, I'll, I'll support that. Develop a plan. What, what is it going to cost?
Yeah. What is it? What, you know, from there. And I don't know how much time it takes to put a plan together, but I think that's the starting point.
Yeah. So generally, when we go about concepts and ideas, it starts with a plan. It requires a planning department. It requires our teams to assessment and to do that, and that gets the class. I think it's been stated, this is great to see a group of individuals in the community wishing to bring additional recreation access. Wonderful. It's, it's a great goal. And, and John, I think you were referencing in our talk today that there was a plan that was done with the watershed. And I will pull that up and find it that they deemed back in 2005 that this would be a great water recreational area. And in fact, we did a launch going into Boone County for that reason. So I think a plan and finding how to onboard this. The license seems to be, as far as step one, if they're willing, that's an easy way to allow them to continue and to take a look at that. But when they first came about, it was, it was this. I assumed that no doubt, this would be, because we are the recreational public agency in the county, that they'll be looking for more. There will be an investment in the future at some point. Maybe it's a public-private partnership, there'll, there will be additional canoe launches if this works on some areas across in McHenry County. And likely, like the Nipper Sink, be the individual involved with that. Or it'll be the Village of Union or the City of McHenry. The, the other piece that's different from the Nipper Sink is that this is not a navigable waterway. It is not, it, it is not that you can float on it or paddle through. It's not designated as a navigable waterway. So we need to find out from council how that would be, how that's determined. Is it done by an act in Springfield? Is it a judge? Who makes the determination of that water? Because I think that also plays into public access as far as our ability to allow individuals down into the river. Well, that's a good point right there.
So, so are, are we all right with at least staff and them have, and their group having some discussion as to what their plan is, what they're hoping to do? And they may have to make some changes in their group is how they are licensed or legally set up. They may have to make some choices also on their side. Sides have some little work to do and I don't want it to be where we could, as we've all set the plan together. Is, is that right for now? Sure. Okay. Is that a consensus or are we all right?
I'm okay with it. I just don't want it to take away from something else that's already
Right.
going forward.
Yeah. Are we looking more for a plan or are we looking more for information about capacity and what we could, what we're capable of, or we go this direction? What are we giving up?
Probably everything.
Yes, I would say that.
It's the all of that. I was like, all that has to do with it.
It would be considered, it's a new initiative, but again, we always, you know, it's, there's always new ideas that are coming forth and we just have to figure out how we runway and get them on with everything else. And that's how, I mean, we have to think forward to.
Because I've said in the past, we, we, we really need to at some point in time, sit down and say, okay, what are we doing? What are we adding? And what are we subtracting? And staff may have, and Elizabeth may have to put that together somewhere along the line for us is to, okay, if we add, anytime we add something, what is the problem that may go away? Or what are we, what have we done that maybe could take less work than it has in the past or whatever? And a lot of changing. But we may, not that that's our choice, staff needs to manage, but we need to be aware of what's being added, what's being subtracted.
Well, and the challenge too is this. I'm going to start more back in my side. The challenge too is.
Go ahead, two more weeks.
Is that, it's, you know, there are other groups that are going to come. And, and so, and so many of them have great ideas and we just can't be asking staff to look into and plan and whatever, every single one. And so I, I do want, I do think it's a good, ultimately, some kind of activity out there would be great. How we get there.
This got done with the snowmobilers wanting an extension. So.
It's, it's going to get complicated.
Well, when you have 26,000 acres, yeah, that's good.
And I, I mean, at some point, the folks, the special interests can pony up. I know that the horse, the equestrian group put money towards a parking lot. And I, and I imagine that, you know, other groups, if they are really serious about accomplishing something, you know, they can have a raffle or a fundraiser and come up with some funds. In other words, we're going to have, I mean, I think people can understand the financial aspects of this and whether it's snowmobilers, horseback riders, you know, cyclists, cross-country skiers.
I mentioned that to Elizabeth. They all saw this.
I mean, either that or you go to a utilization fee and, you know, you, you want to, you pay to play.
I think that's part of the plan that they should also put together is what is their capacity to help us financially? I think that's something that should be discussed. It's okay. If, if you want five items and they're going to cost, you know, $20,000, what is your capacity to help on that? Or whatever dollars it would be, what is your capacity to help out along the way?
This is not, I mean, for any public entity, whether it be a forest preserve district or municipality, always request that. And so that is why in parts planning, comprehensive plans, and comprehensive plans is a longer run of what do, what do we have? What do we need? What does the community need? Where are the parts of the community that are underserved? You know, what things need to go away? What needs to be brought forward? And that way you can, to say, okay, not today, but, but we'll work towards this and it's in our mass, it's in our, it's in our comprehensive plan to bring this to light. And I think the reality is because we've been in a maintenance mode, you know, with more acreage, taking care of what we have and figuring that out, it seems just, you know, how do you add more into more capacity unless you do figure out something that, again, this may, this makes perfect sense. It would take congestion off the Nipper Sink, right? It would add an area for an underserved area that doesn't have it. So it's all good.
Right. So, you know, and perhaps there's some grants someplace for river trails. And so that, I mean, there's a lot of angles to this issue that you well know.
I think I'm just asking for a little bit longer to have a bit more of a discussion and then we'll, we'll find out from there where if there's a problem here or not. Okay. That's as long as one of my reports has ever had to take.
Great conversation. Thank you. And thank you, Andrew.
Okay. Public comments. Stephanie, do you have anybody out there in the public?
Nope, there are none.
Okay. That's, so Kelly would end it. Oh, Kelly does? Okay.
Um, first of all, I want to say that I kind of feel like an idiot that I'm not at home and not there. So I apologize for that. I can't believe this slipped my mind.
We've gotten over it already.
Yeah, I forgot about it.
I don't know. I saw some of you rolling your eyes. So, no, I'm just kidding. I just wanted to brag. I, I just wanted to brag for a second because my daughter had her first day as, with internship at the Environmental Defenders. So she's doing that this summer and she's thrilled. And I know she's going to be teaching me a bunch of stuff. So I just had to tell you guys that.
Well, Kelly, I just agreed to do soils training for all the volunteers at the defenders and stuff like that. So I guess I'll meet her.
Great. Give her a hard time.
I will.
Okay. That's it for public comments number one. Brings us to board business consent agenda. How's your voice tonight, Lynn?
No, not too bad.
Anybody have a hang on, pull off the consent agenda.
No, not me.
Okay, we're good. So you're up, Lynn.
Okay.
Second.
We would have to give her a.
Oh, oh, sorry.
We can get your train deck.
It's the same thing as on the blue thing, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I move that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the following. 12.1, approval of minutes of previous meetings. 12.1A, April 15, 2021, committee of the whole. 12.1B, April 20, 2021, special call. 12.1C, April 20, 2021, regular meeting. 12.1D, March 18, 2021, county executive. 21. E, March 23, 2021, regular meeting, executive. Acceptance of, 12.2, acceptance of the treasurer's report. 12.2A, acceptance of the treasurer's report for April 30, 2021, is presented. 12.2B, acceptance of the variance report fiscal year 2021. 12.3, resolution number 21-42, a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2023 budget timeline. 12.4, resolution number 21-34, a resolution requiring the executive director to the middle of an Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity local coronavirus urgent remediation emergency program certification supplement for pandemic-related costs up to $15,000. 12.5, resolution number 21-35, a resolution amending the job and position description of the current part-time GIS specialist and reclassifying as a full-time GIS analyst, grade 16 administrative, and permanently eliminating the full-time position of science scientific database coordinator, grade 15 administrative, effective May 30, 2021. 12.6, resolution number 2136, a resolution authorizing the DEI committee to pursue negotiations and for the executive director to execute an independent contract agreement with Dr. Sean Bailey of BCG Learning Solutions of Chicago, Illinois, for DEI consultant services at a cost not to exceed $8,000 fiscal year 2021. 12.7, first reading, amendment to policy 4.10, appendix C, criminal background check, policy 9.16, appendix H, non-discrimination and anti-harassment, inform E, fingerprint submission consent form. 12.8, school springs wetland and stream mitigation. 12.8A, resolution number 81-37, authorizing acceptance of the school springs wetland and stream mitigation bank accounting procedures. 12.8B, ordinance number 21-1003, an ordinance with segregating and restricting $102,000 within the natural resources management special revenue fund as financial assurance for the school springs wetland and stream mitigation bank. 12.9, resolution number 21-38, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a management agreement with Martin Papanek for the management of Biscopi Prairie Reserve for a period of three years, beginning May 25, 2021, and ending May 31, 2024. 12.10, resolution number 21-39, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a renewal of an interregional agreement with Lake County Forest Preserve District for the incubation of eggs and subsequent rearing, sorry, of Lake County's turtle for a period of 10, year beginning May 1, 2021, and ending May 31, 2031. 12.11, ratification of the preparation of specifications and letting of bids to secure a joint grassland venture lease for VOC-01, a 54-acre-plus parcel at Boone Creek Conservation Area for a period of three years, beginning July 1, 2021, and ending October 31, 2023. 12.12, authorization to prepare specification and let bids for the repairs and improvements needed on the section of the prairie trail south of Bernard Mill Road in Greenwood, Illinois. 12.13, authorization to reserve, prepare specification and let bids for renovation prairie trail on Lake Road, Wander Lake, Illinois, and Route 120 in McHenry, Illinois. 12.14, resolution number 21-40, a resolution for executive director to execute amendment to the month-to-month residence license agreement for Glacial Park Annex Residence for the term extending to March 31, 2022. 12.15, resolution number 21-43, authorizing payment to the County Collector and McHenry County 2021 person installment of property taxes in the amount not to exceed $87,781 and free size.
Oh, second. Oh, yes. Dave, whatever, roll call, please.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
And yes, from.
Oh, trustee, you don't say trustee, honey.
Motion varies unanimously. I have a consent agenda for this new and unfinished board business. Approval of bills payable, April 2021. And so Dave, you have anything to say for us?
I do. Does anybody, you know, this is the second of the last.
I know. We're going to let you go for it, but next week, next month, we have to sneak it up.
Pretty soon, we're going to have to.
You don't even have to sign it, people.
You'll be so glad I'm gone.
No, we won't.
So vendor, 89, I can't, it's not working. Vendor 8942, Grayslake Feed Sales, $279. Your L, 624, Lander Mouchen, for $360. So that's all I had.
Anybody else have one? What's that?
No, I don't.
Very, very good. All right. So we'll be polled and I'll be, I'll be checked to see if everything was done procedurally correctly. Okay, Bill, we're ready for you to do 131B.
Okay. So I move that we approve the payment to conserve FS as indicated on the submission of report for the period ending April 30, 2021.
It's a second.
Second?
Yeah, it's got a second over there. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
You know, before I leave, maybe I say no ones.
No kidding? Yes.
Uh, this one?
Just that one.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
I'm staying.
I'm getting on to you.
Is there a pattern going on here? We're going to have to go to where there's microphones to show.
131C, I move that we approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of Bill's report, Bill's pending report for the month ending April 30, 2021.
You'll second it. Okay. Dave's second. Roll call.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes. Motion unanimously. Okay, executive director's report.
Hi. All right. Do you know that the, I said that before, your summer landscapes is out. So a lot of great programs and we are getting ready, like we talked about last week, to organizing the outcomes of preparing for our full opening when that happens. The, a lot of activities. We've got a foundation meeting tomorrow evening. I will take Lynn.
Um, the, uh, a lot of activities, we've got a foundation meeting tomorrow evening, I will take, Lynn, uh, we'll, we'll address that. But, uh, we're beginning to look at, uh, projects, uh, for the upcoming year, um, just a lot of great things. And we have not had it over to the Los Valley Museum Center and scout.
I forgot to say in my report, I took the grandkids there on Sunday. It's awesome.
All right, good. Did they have a good time?
Yeah, pulling all those things open.
Yeah, a lot of touchy hands, so it'll be great with COVID and all that, so his kids can get in there.
It was really crowded. I mean, there was a lot of people there.
It is, and they're doing a great job in keeping things with opening, but that is a great, having great articles, so thank you for sharing that with the local newspaper, um, of what's going on in that regard. Um, and it's just a busy time. We're in the process of bringing on, um, our or out there, our scientists are definitely busy. Um, we announced that we did bring out our new agricultural coordinator, uh, Brenan Ness, so you'll have an opportunity to meet her. Um, and, um, yeah, staff is just doing a great job and, and doing what we do at this time of the year. Everybody's extremely busy, but, uh, again, doing just a fantastic job.
No, I really want to say something about that. I, I, I thought that the work that went into, one thing we didn't get was those little smell things. I can't smell that good, neither could the kids. But you're going into all the things and seeing what was there. My youngest granddaughter just loved going in it. The wetlands and savanna and the prairie, or woodlands and the prairie. Um, after a couple hours, I ask kids, what's, what are the? It was pretty cool.
Well, and that, that was brought to us, that was a grant that was written to the Capitol Museum Grant, and as you know, that was a grant that did get swept and was restored and, and the foundation helped us continue to get the plans, so we were ready to carry on. And Wendy took over the leadership, we worked with the education team and all the way through, it's finished, so a great job. So, Lynn?
Yeah, I, I do, but.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, I guess it's not your.
It's our child.
It'll be alright, whatever.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay. So I, I don't know how much, anyway, um, they did, um, vote for them. They had the funds for the youth and family center. So they approved that. Um, they are, they're having a special call meeting tomorrow night. I know I can't go, but, um, um, they're, they're really trying to, I guess it's, um, funds, budget, marketing, raising awareness, trying to, and also, um, trying to, um, get, or just like brainstorming to attract other directors for the foundation. It sounds, it's like more of a break. It sounds, it sounds really interesting.
Their bylaws allow them to, to have more than what they have on their now.
Yeah, to eleven, I think, right?
I thought, so they could, then what they have now, seven, eight.
Gosh, I don't know.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do a little bit of talking about that. It'll be interesting to see what they come up with. I really feel like they're really trying. I, 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 I agree. Um, what, it can't, it comes up again is we have not asked, the district has not asked funds for the landing turtle and it keeps on coming back. They said we have not asked for funds for.
MCCD has not asked the foundation.
For the funds.
Wanted to build something, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the landing turtle, because.
We asked for it a few years ago, then we didn't get it done, so we withdrew it, so are we?
Yeah, that's what, what, first, they seem to be interested in doing it.
Yeah, they're very interested in that and Sarah Denham and the team, uh, they need to put the plans together that fully organize the forward and, um, we don't want to have the same. So they are aware that I do know that it is an interest and we are having, starting again, continue our work with Lake County, that's very important.
So when that, when would that? So when would that be used? In the spring? Year round or when? I'm just saying, so if it, if it was gonna be used in the springtime, we, we've kind of missed it for this year. So we have all the way till next spring to do that, or what's the timing of that?
Ed, so with the hatchlings out there, and I know Sarah, you may have had some direct conversation with where they are and the plans specifically?
I'm, I'm catching about every other word, but I think it's about the landing turtle enclosure and, uh, the, and exposure would, would probably not be used for the hatchlings of that year because they keep them inside for a while. Uh, and it wouldn't be used during the winter, but I do know Sarah's working on trying to develop plans for it and to take another run at it.
So that, that's something that I can take back to them. Okay.
Say we're working on it.
Working on it.
At some point in time, put a time.
I just wanted you to be aware, we're very interested in continuing on with that. Otterbach, do I say Otterbach?
Otterbach.
Which is like almost walking distance from my house. Um, they, it's, they have developments going on there.
It's a fabulous site.
It is.
Really, I volunteered there for years.
Yeah, well, they want to restore the wetland. And they, they might have a neighbor interested.
You've already approved phase one.
The project, well, I think there's three, three, um, different phases. And they, they're asking for all from the neighbor.
Oh.
So.
That is true, you think?
I think it's my next door.
Yeah, sure. Cool.
I think, I can't, I could be wrong. I don't know.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I think that's cool. It is a cool little site. I take my grandchildren there all the time.
That little path?
Yeah.
Boardwalk and everything?
Yeah, yeah, they like it. So, um, that's kind of exciting. Um, you already went to the artist reception, where you went?
I did, I saw that too. Incredible.
But that goes on, yeah, that continues on.
Crazy, good.
There's an artist reception at Los Valley Valley Visitor Center. Uh, that's, oh, we're starting First Friday's concerts again. So I think.
Yeah, but I, we just found out and I got in trouble with my wife, that you've got to pre-register.
You do.
And we already found out the ones we want are already full.
Oh.
So you gotta be Johnny on the spot.
This is the first year that we were charging, um, and it's a limited kind of special.
Twelve fifty, I think, a person, right?
It's pretty inexpensive.
Yeah.
Fifty attendance. Yeah, I think I have twelve dollars to attend, but it could be twelve fifty, I don't know. Um, paddle, paddle, saddle, paddle, paddle, saddle is coming up. And I think that's the end of my notes because you are not interested in horse products.
Depending how it relates to what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
That's my own notes for my.
May I elaborate, please, on the art display? So somebody, I couldn't tell, couldn't find the name, but they had needle pointed all of the trails at a lot, almost what, twelve or fifteen, twenty sites? Just elaborate and, and where the oaks are, it's just painstaking work someone done.
How big is that?
It must be twenty.
So that would be whole.
It's, it's what we call that Ruble's business, right? Get the big windows, we.
To the right.
Yeah, to the right.
The overlook?
Yeah, the overlook. So it's, I don't know, I couldn't tell you, but there's a lot of wall space and they're all used.
Okay.
Barbara Schneider, Barbara Schneider is the artist.
Barbara Schneider, immense amount of work.
And twelve dollars for the concert, yeah, for residents.
Okay. Well, thank you for that report. That's great. Sounds like a lot of interest there.
Yeah, there is. I, I think we're trying.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to other committee assignments. Uh, let's see here.
I think I'm first.
You're first with, uh, Crepe?
Yeah. Okay, so last, well, it's actually, last time around, um, our, May was our, this month. Our speaker was Ed Collins, as I mentioned before. Um, what I thought I would do is now that the board meeting is over, I'm gonna send everybody a link. And you don't have to listen, but if you get a chance.
Oh, listen, you gotta listen.
You were on, that's right.
Yeah.
It is, it's great. It's his, um, talk on the fourth, um, conservation movement. And he's given this before, but he very, he, he's very, um, good at what he's doing and he changes it up, is what I was trying to say, exactly. And so I'm gonna send a direct link out to you so you don't have to go messing around with finding it. That way it's easier. Our next, um, program is going to be on June ninth. Um, it's a new network and we're going to be at, uh, doing the Crystal Creek watershed tour. We start at Crystal Lake, um, City Hall and get over to Lundell, and then I think we're going down to Algonquin where we have our, where the, we have the path goes down there as well, but they, where they had the bypass over thirty-one and look at the improvements there as well. And I think Steve Zimmerman from RES is gonna be talking today of Crystal Lake, represents what's, what's happened there.
When is that, Lynn?
This is, I'm sorry, when?
When is that?
Noon. Uh, it's noon and you'll meet at Crystal Lake, uh, City Hall. I haven't been to Carpool or not, but our first stop is gonna be Lundell near High anyway, and look at the work that's been done at the creek there, and then we'll go down to I wanted to mention, and because, Bill, you were talking about being a paddler. Um, also a member of the, the executive who's with King County, and she's been overseeing the fabulous Fox Waterway Trail and we're working on registered with the National Forest Preserve, um, Forest Service, uh, to get registered as a national trail. So she's been working hard on that, but they have, there's a website, fabulous uh, foxwaterwaytrail.org that gives you itineraries for different places to take in and take out. And these are there, it tells you how long it is, businesses that are nearby, it's, it's really quite involved. If you are a paddler, I would look that up. She's done a great job with that. That's it.
Crepe.
There wasn't a Crepe meeting, but there was a watershed round table. Uh, and that's the exact same membership. As I sit here right now, I left my have no idea what we talked about. So.
Never mind.
That was Kishwaki River Ecosystem Partnership, but there's a round table that they have, watershed round table, and it was under that format.
They report for us next?
Maybe.
Well, what can we do to you if you don't?
Yeah. Fire me.
Yeah. All right.
Well, it is. Um, so the Excellence in which is a great review ecological program, the district submitted one of our sites to be considered and Lori Ryan, who was our paddledist, also on that commission. Opportunity because they go out to the different sites. And how they're doing with the biodiversity recovery plan and adapting and really, we've won several, uh, awards in acknowledgement for the great work of our natural resources team and volunteers. So that is underway, um, and so we'll find out later this year they, they scored hopefully, um, not time you identify when you put into it, where if you meet the criteria, whether you'll be a bronze, silver, gold, or platinum. And I believe we've only in the past submitted, um, our platinum type, uh, our staff feels like until it's that ready to be that platinum, they're not gonna submit something that's less than, but that's the excellence of our, our natural resources team. Uh, but some agencies, uh, do it differently so they can show progress. They may submit a bronze, which is well to their elected officials and need some extra things in order for it to, uh, score better. Um, so that's one program. Um, the other item that we have been working on, and thank you for mentioning, on the diversity, equity, inclusion. Um, we have contracted with Cream City Conservation LLC out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And they are going to be leading our diversity, equity, inclusion assessment and educational training available to all of our members of the district. Take in that. So again, instead of our limited scope that you approved, we'll piggyback on what we're doing with the alliance and then we'll have data that we'll be able to look at, not only for our population here in Conservation District, that are members in McHenry County as well as in the region. Um, you know, how they're doing in Lake County and that, and really a baseline. So I think it's gonna be a great plan, um, that, and then there'll be, uh, educational sessions available to all staff and, uh, board members, um, on Zoom. Uh, and that'll start this year and that'll start next year. So, um, and then our next meeting is in July, uh, for our quarterly consulting.
Okay, thank you. And now this is where the meeting gets really interesting because now under the bureau, I have Dave Brandt and Elizabeth Kessler giving that report.
Oh, good, that should be interesting.
So, wow.
That's another one I blow.
That's not what it says on mine.
It says Patrick, it says.
Yeah, the revised one.
Mine, mine was in my packet, gives me.
I'll have to revise.
I hate to disappoint you, but we had no meeting.
Well, I couldn't give you that.
You should have seen, oh, they came up.
Well, we talked about.
Lots of things. We've got the bio reactor in August that we're planning for, okay?
All right, well, I don't have the revised version here, so.
It's got on there, but this is, so.
All right, well, anyway, so there's nothing to report there. And, uh, well, then on my.
Oh, mine's got me and Elizabeth, but I don't think there's been an IAPD or an, uh, I don't, Illinois Association of Park Districts nor a National Park, Natural Recreation and Park Association. But Elizabeth, you did have an Illinois Association of Conservation and Forest Preserve District meeting. Rather than the acronym, that port is over there, so.
Thank you, Dave, for doing that. I appreciate you, you doing that. So we did meet online. Uh, we talked about, uh, what was happening down in Springfield with legislative and the budget sweeps. So the OSLAB funding, which is an important grant program. Was into local investments out of the real estate transfer tax. There's a lot of effort put forth in discussion on that. We talked a little bit about some of the federal dollars and special districts. Uh, we're not able to tap into that in that we would need to look with our local counties and municipalities. And, um, we're also looking at some reinvestment of some of the funds that the association has some member initiatives, some group things that we our county-wide organization. Our next meeting will be, uh, in the summer, in August, and it'll hopefully be an in-person meeting.
Thank you. Foundation, we done? Okay, you have that?
Todd, um, virtual meeting, um, actually Elizabeth was on and, um, the Wilcox was on, and the Bueller. Um, so it was pretty well attended. I'm looking more at the, the weekly newsletter that came out after that. Currently, the new, new group of, um, officers for the coming year. Uh, again, president will be Ringwood, President Rick Mack. Vice President is Cary, Mayor Mark Secretary is Albatman, President Debbie Sozine. And Treasurer is McHenry Mayor Wayne Jet. And so, uh, did just give some review of their annual report, for legislative, um, things that they're looking for legislatively, uh, for them. A lot of what their, their concern is with the redistributive fund, uh, so Senator Wilcox is hoping that we get back to ten percent. About some of the projects, I think, I don't have it on me. Um, between twenty-two and twenty-seven, um, they said spending about eighteen million dollars. Um, he listed out a few projects, but they talked rather fast, so I'm sure it's in their, um, back maybe on their website. Nine million will be, um, spent in the county for the first year, twenty twenty-two, and then the other nine will be spread out over five. Now, maybe thirty-one. I forget exactly what they, I know forty-seven was one of them for sure. Um, they're going to be having their, uh, golf outing is coming in June, so they're gonna be doing that again this year. We were invited, they do have a weekly newsletter, so we were, I, I kind of was talking to Shailin about that and, um, if we have something specific that we'd like to shoot out to the, the mayor's group, um, we are welcome to provide something in the newsletter. I guess I can be doing an update every month or every week, but, you know, maybe a couple times throughout the year, we can invite them to something more way. And then there will be a follow-up later this year of another social gathering at the Johnsburg. So that's another, another meeting. We get it, because that's, that's where, Johnsburg.
Oh, that's the yacht club, right?
Yacht, yeah.
Okay, so what yacht club thing, I think they did that before.
Hold on, wait. You got the.
Yacht club.
What about the Morton tree? Was that the tree? No. I'm trying to think of what the, the new one is. Um, we did, the last, last month was May, I guess May is still this month. Um, we did have, um, somebody from the Morton Arboretum come in and talk to us about this. Um, we did have, um, somebody from the Morton Arboretum come in and talk to us about the Chicago Region Tree Initiative, which is actually quite interesting. So if you get on their website, you know, that, or, you can overlay where, um, throughout the whole Chicago region where some of the needs are and, um, where some of the problems. Since she was talking about that, the, the one coming up.
Okay. All right, John Kramer, uh, do you have a map meeting?
Yeah, there was a map meeting. Uh, I was unable to attend, so I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. A lot of.
I know.
Next month.
I should have said that.
Uh, visit McHenry County. Elizabeth?
Uh, we have not met. There will be one up and coming before, um, that we're doing some economic, uh, to have a company come in to give us metrics on how certain places, you know, as far as metrics behind the scenes of visitorship, and so that we'll be able, and the Conservation District will be part of the sites that they're studying. So for example, they'll be able to follow, you know, the attended Glacial Park, where else did you go? You know, in some of this, and I think that'll be some interesting data, um, because we were on a call today, uh, with the Region Planning Council on funds out of the stimulus rescue plan and trying to leverage our trail system for some dollars. And really having those metrics of visitorship in connection to the business community is, is a big part of that. So, um, all good stuff.
Okay, that was our last one. Unless Lynn, you have something to come back to on the green drinks.
Yeah, I don't have it right now, sorry.
Okay, well, we'll catch that up.
National Defense Council.
Next month, too.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's gonna move us all the way back, all the way down to public comments, number two. Stephanie, do you have anybody out there that's?
Oh, you got it. I, I, I did see it. All right, so I'm sorry.
You wanna go?
Sure, sure, why not? I got it right here, I'm sorry.
All right.
We are still waiting to hear, but Gina Ramirez from the National Resources Defense Council, uh, would be talking to us, and I do believe it is about.
Environmental justice.
Environmental justice.
Okay.
Okay. And that's always the first Wednesday of the month. We're gonna go, and that's for June. It's at six o'clock via Zoom, so it's very easy to get on. Um, in the following month, in July, we'll be meeting for the first time in person. We're gonna do a hybrid of Zoom, because there're gonna be people, what we don't wanna do is lose the people who are coming, who would not come because they're not comfortable yet. Um, and, and actually, it's kinda be, gonna be a great way to keep people coming in the winter, when I know for sure some people drop off, because they're not gonna make the drive. So, um, we're gonna keep going with a hybrid the first, so we're gonna, not sure what the time is gonna be. Uh, try to push it back maybe a little bit later, so people who are working can actually, can actually attend, so.
Okay.
So, thank, thank you for looking on that.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, public comments, too. Stephanie?
None, I don't see anything.
Then I move to go into executive session pursuant to two C one personnel, two C eleven probable pending litigation, two C twenty-one review of close session minutes, and two C five purchase or lease of real estate of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Lynn. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, the motion carries unanimously. We'll be going into executive session, and when we come out, we'll have one point of action afterwards, and then we will adjourn from there. So, uh, um, if somebody wants to come back for that, I can, but right now, we're, we're gonna go into executive session.
We are adjourned.
Clear out of this, this.
Well, thank you.
Oh, yes.
All right, uh, so we need a roll call.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, I'm present. We're all here, um, and would somebody like to make?
I would move to adopt resolution twenty-one forty-one, a resolution authorizing the execution of a project amendum, addendum to the memorandum of understanding with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation for the acquisition, restoration, management, and future transfer of real estate.
I'll second.
Lynn seconds. Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yep.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Dave, don't you wanna make a motion?
Uh, may I move to adjourn?
Okay, I was.
I'll second.
I'll second. Uh, roll call, please.
On, trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I have stuff for everybody to sign.